Second 2016 Regular Council Meeting to Order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are televised and they also can be viewed on Cable Channel 192. Would someone from Leadership Casper care to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, give us your name.
My name's A.J., A.J. Penley.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 18th, 2016 Special Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on January 25th.
We're moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the January 19th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on January 26th.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the February 2nd, 2016 Bills and Claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Pacheco. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Well, I've already noticed that we have members of Leadership Council, Leadership Casper present. Please welcome them to the meeting. Leadership Casper offers a comprehensive leadership program in partnership with Harrigan Peregrin Leadership Institute. This year, the program included 21 participants representing various industries within Casper. Participants receive educational and participatory experiences meeting community leaders while networking with a wide array of people. Monthly sessions include site visits, tours, and interactive programs that provide participants with a better understanding of a community issue, issues, and with a greater respect for resources and services provided by the community. Leadership Casper consists of eight full-day sessions beginning in early September and continuing through May. Each monthly session includes leadership training as well as topics relative to community, state, and the region. Sessions are designed to offer instruction through Peregrin Leadership Institute using interactive participation and direct application of the program concepts. Members of Leadership Casper, if each of you or any of you would like to introduce yourself and tell us where you work, you're welcome to. Okay.
Let's do it.
Good evening, I'm Mary Baker and I'm the Operations Officer at Platt Valley Bank on the west side of town.
Good evening, I'm Valera Johnson, I'm a staff accountant with Wyoming Community Development Authority. They are a housing finance agency for the state of Wyoming.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jessica Duty, I'm the manager of Summit Title Services.
Jamie Warner, Loan Operations Supervisor at First Interstate Bank.
Jessica Leslie, I'm the teller supervisor at First Interstate Bank.
Once again, I'm A.J. Penley, I do business development for API Distribution here in
Hello, I'm Tess Kersenbrock, I'm the Community Relations Coordinator with Make O Wish Wyoming.
Carl Tabor, I'm a Senior Project Manager with GSG Architecture.
Hi there, I'm Crystal Burbak, I'm the Administrator for Intrim Healthcare.
See, and I thought they were gonna keep the old lady for last. Oh, I'm Carolyn Griffith, City Employee with the Recreation Division.
Ben Hauser, I'm a Geotechnical Engineer with Inberg Miller Engineers.
Bert Andreen, and I'm a Civil Engineer with ECS Engineering.
I'm Marnie Camp, and I'm the Director of Special Education at the Child Development
Hi, I'm Kelly Paddock, I'm an HR Generalist for Natrona County School District.
Hello, I'm Tammy Hanchow, Area Coordinator of Public Relations for the University of Wyoming at Casper.
And I'm Travis Feigler, I'm a CPA with Porter-McMurray at Corning Howard.
Mike Bratfold, City of Casper, Solid Waste Division.
Susan Minati, I'm the HR Specialist at Reliant Federal Credit Union.
Hello, I'm Lisa Magnuson, I'm the CACFP Director with Wyoming Nutrition Services. And I think that's all of us. Thank you.
Okay, and whose ever idea it was to pass around the mic, that was good. That was good. That worked. Okay. Yeah.
I wonder if we might ask somebody to give us just a little quick rundown of what they learned, if there's somebody that wants to volunteer there?
Okay, who wants to be the spokesman to answer our dicey questions? Okay, who just wants to tell us what it's about?
What Leadership Casper is about?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just...
Please come to the mic, though.
So, Leadership Casper is a nine-session program where the first part of the day, they go through Peregrin Leadership Training, learn how to become a better leader for the community.
Thank you.
Is that it?
And let's note, Lisa Magnuson?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
See, there we go.
Anything else?
Any questions?
Well, as a follow-up to what Councilman Hopkins said, what have you learned?
Well, this is actually my second year in the program. We are the... There's leaders in the year and then they plan the next year for the class. So, really, I've learned a lot about decisions you make and how they affect the people you're working with and the people around you.
Very good.
Right.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, before I turn the page, I would just like to note, there's a lot of talent in the gallery tonight. Okay. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action: by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify local law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for council to carry out business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements, and items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council to remove a title from consent so that we can have a public discussion about it. And now, we get to bring in an incoming councilman, Councilman Healy. Please come forward. Hello, sir. We're gonna set you up to be sworn in right there. Municipal Judge Nakbar will now issue the oath of office. And then the councilman will move to his assigned seat. If you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Wayne Healy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming...
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And that I have not knowingly violated any law...
And that I have not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment...
Related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others...
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Congratulations. I would like to note that Judge Nakbar went easy on you because the last time he administered me the oath, it was like three sentences, and I had to keep track. Anyway. Well, we invite you, Councilman Healy, to make comments and to introduce any family of friends. Turn on your mic.
I have no instructions on that. Thank you. Never sat here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for your faith that you placed in me in this appointment. I hope to live up to the expectations of the council in my actions and deeds. I'm pleased to represent Ward One and the citizens of the cities of Casper in this The citizens, the city website is excellent and there's contact information. If you'd like to reach out to me, you can find me and the council members list with an email and a phone number on the website. It's up and going, so you're welcome to do that. I'd like to recognize my wife Stacy and daughters Sarah and Lauren who are here this evening, and thank you for allowing me Tuesday evenings and so many other times which I'll be doing this. I appreciate your support in this. And also, just really quickly, a couple of my friends, fellow Rotarians from the Five Trails Casper Club have come tonight. Thank you for coming and supporting me. And to the Leadership Casper class, I just wanted to say, part of the discernment and the journey which brought me to apply for this city council job was last year when I worked and went through the Leadership Wyoming class. And I know that what you're doing in the leadership class is gonna take you places that you'd never imagined. So, thank you for doing that and dedicating your time to bettering yourself and getting to know Casper better.
Okay. All right. The meetings of the... The minutes of the meeting will reflect that Councilman Healy has now joined the meeting. And the council will now hold previous scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then ask to speak and either in favor or against the issue, and then the council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the Memorandum of Understanding on Growth Boundaries with the Town of Barnun. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald dated January 13th, 2016. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 27th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, while the city of Casper has agreements with Evansville and the Town of Mills concerning growth boundaries, it's had no such agreement with the Town of Barnun. After several months of discussions, a municipal growth management agreement has been created between Casper and Barnun, which is more for you tonight to consider. Barnun has agreed to stay on the west side of Interstate 25. And on the map that everyone can see, the growth area is the pink area with the yellow area being the proper for the town right now of Barnun. A major point of the negotiations was Barnun's south boundary because Casper's future growth boundary agreement between Mills is in the corridor roughly going up Highway 26 north of Mills and what is now south of the Barnun growth boundary. It was important to keep that corridor open. Mills agreed to... Barnun, excuse me, Barnun agreed to move the south boundary up quite a bit, allowing this corridor and this avenue of future growth, which is in the Casper boundary, to be a little broader than it originally was when we started negotiations. And that... We believe that boundary, that avenue through there is adequate and will work for Casper. The benefit of entering in this agreement is that the current boundaries can be incorporated in an update of the city of Casper's comprehensive land use plan, which will be underway shortly, as well as updated transportation studies for the area. This agreement should not be construed to be a desire to be, again, annexation or expanding the city of Casper's corporate limits to this area. Rather, future growth in the area may take decades to materialize, and a future annexation will be the subject of review of many factors, including is the growth logical and can the city of Casper extend services to the area being proposed to be annexed at the time of annexation. City of Barnun Town Council has already approved this agreement, and Craig Collins, the Casper City Planner, is here to answer any questions that may come up.
Very good. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the growth boundaries, please approach the lectern. People speaking in favor. Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the growth boundaries to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the growth boundaries, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize the Memorandum of Understanding on Growth Boundaries with the Town of Barnun.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an important step forward that I think people should understand. We have an outdated comprehensive land use plan, and it was important to get these growth boundaries in place before we could move forward with an update of that plan. One of the reasons we're able to do this is that unlike many communities in Wyoming, Casper has very positive working relationships with the surrounding communities, not only Barnun and Evansville, but Evans... Excuse me. Mills and...
Barnun.
Barnun, Evansville, and Mills. No, no, the Edgerton. Mills and Edgerton, and the county. And we meet monthly, the leaderships of those respective entities meet monthly. Relations are very cordial and mutually supportive. We have differences, of course, because we represent different constituencies, but it's important that we have these positive relations, particularly because the state in its wisdom has given money to the counties in a block grant called a consensus funding, which is just that. It requires a consensus of all the entities upon, as far as setting priorities. And I believe Casper has been a good partner in setting our priorities aside sometimes so that these smaller communities that have more difficult financial conditions often are able to move forward with needed projects. And it's just been very gratifying to be part of that process and see that some of the bickering and turf battles that go on in other communities are more or less absent in our community because we have just a desire to serve our citizens. And so hopefully, we'll be able to move forward with this update of the comprehensive land use plan because people who want to come to this area need to know what the rules are and where they can locate whatever it is they hope to build, whether it be residential development or commercial development or apartment building. And so, this was really the last step that needed to... The last box that needed to be checked before that process could really begin in earnest. And so, it's a very positive outcome. And thanks to all that had a part in making this happen.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with everything Councilman Powell said. In addition to that, when people come to town and they have some kind of a project that they want to do, by knowing the growth boundaries that you guys have put in... That we put in place tonight, it allows these people to go directly to the proper authority to start working with them. In the planning business, things don't happen overnight. And when you can come to the right spot and get started in the right office instead of running around to all the cities, that just makes things a lot easier. So this is really important for what can happen in any one of the cities involved in the growth boundaries.
Anyone else? Okay. I echo the sentiments of Councilman Powell and Councilman Hopkins, and I would just like to note, Casper is a municipality. We're a metropolitan area because we have these little cities on our border. So, how many metropolitan areas do we have in Wyoming? One. So, cooperation is good, and Councilman Powell is very correct in saying that Casper has been able to afford to kind of move some of the consensus funding to the smaller cities. Even though we're the gorilla, we could get most of it. We have had a spirit of cooperation in the past. And it's a shame that the legislature decided to just kind of nix consensus funding this year. It's gonna create hardship for a lot of small communities. But, we're glad that we at least are keeping our bureaucratic ducks in a row. Okay. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership and location of retail liquor license number 21. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this matter. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy L. Belser to V.H. McDonald dated February 2nd, 2016. Exhibit number two being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 2nd, 2016. Exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of website publication as published on the city of Casper website, that document being dated January 14th, 2016. And exhibit number four being the liquor license application itself, which was filed with the city on January 8th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, Modern Electric Company at 246 West First has submitted an application for the transfer of liquor license number 21 from its current location being 100 North Ash Street or the... As was operated as a sandbar. This particular transfer will move the license to a park status and not an operating facility for the sale of liquor. It being parked, it can be parked at that location for two years, and then an optional one-year if council grants that extension at the expiration of the two-year period. As the city attorney mentioned, all the property advertising has been made and the licenses... The license application is ready for your consideration.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of retail liquor license number 21 to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak in favor. Welcome, Pat Sweeney.
Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. Nancy is not feeling very good this evening, and we could take the mic back to her if needed, if council had any questions. I would like to ask a question of council, very much in favor of this, but are the restrictions that applied to Nancy and the sandbar basically because of Roger Hessler, are those restrictions still on this license as it transfers ownership?
They are, correct?
Correct, Your Honor. Generally, the restrictions stay in place until a license holder asks for those to be amended, as occurred with the last restrictions, but these are being transferred with all the restrictions on that property, on that license.
Okay. Yes.
Even though it's transfer of definitely nothing to do with Roger Hessler, or even the same location, that's not taken into consideration? And what kind of process will it take? Will it take public advertising, three readings, in order for those restrictions to go away?
How do we amend that?
It would require the license holder to make an application to the council for removal of any or all of the restrictions. the council for removal of any or all of the restrictions. And then at that time, that would be set for a matter before council. This is a license, the restrictions are at the bequest of council, and council has the authority to remove or amend those. It does not require three readings.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, might point out that the intent of the new owner is to park this license.
Right.
So there is no...
Right, we don't have an issue with those as yet.
There's no immediate issue, I don't believe, with those restrictions. I think the intent of having the restrictions on the license is to ensure that the restrictions that were put on there originally and the reasons don't become forfeited by a new owner.
Okay. And so the, the reasons that that restriction was put in place do not reoccur? Got it. Right. Okay.
I understand the logic, I don't agree with the logic. Makes no sense to me why council would, would continue that, knowing that it's a totally different owner. I think the only reason they're probably parking is they're not exactly sure of a location yet. But I, I would assume, and I would ask council, when they do come back, to remember it has nothing to do with Roger Hessler, and that was the main reason that those restrictions were placed on there. So I ju, just find it a little cumbersome, but, but understand. So we'll agree to disagree.
Okay.
And then on last note, again, I'd like to thank Nancy for all of her hard work in, number one, cleaning the Sandbar up as best as she could. She lost a lot of business when she took the music out, and consequently, business declined. Then we had the smoking ban. Then we didn't have the smoking ban. And business came back up, now we have smoking ban again. So, but I would like to thank her again for all of her help on Safe Rides, the original Tipsy Taxi, and again, wish her well in her next endeavors, retirement, hopefully. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
It's always good to agree to disagree.
Okay.
Right, counsel.
Any more questions for Pat? Okay, at this time, I'm still asking for those speaking in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Name's Dennis Steensland, 533 South Washington, Casper. Are we not going to make it public what the restrictions are? I don't, I know it was discussed a couple meetings ago. Is that something that we can discuss tonight? If so, I'd like to hear some discussion. If not, I've had a connection with Modern back to the late 50s, and I think their, their primary thing is they're, they've got a connection with the Bozeses and that bar, and the Sandbar for many years. And from visiting with them, I, I think that's their, one of their pushes for picking up the Sandbar Lounge, and I didn't realize it was going to be parked. I'm not a favor of, of the parking of these licenses, but I can understand, in this instance, why they would park it. Can anybody tell me how many licenses we now have parked in Casper? Those are my...
Two or three.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
As far as the restrictions go, it's published on the city website, the packet for this meeting, and it's all on there for the public review.
Okay.
To the question of how many do we have parked, I heard two or three from Councilman Hopkins.
Your Honor, I believe we have two parked.
Okay. Okay, officially, we have two parked, and any more questions for Dennis Steensland?
This will be number three. This will be number two.
Okay. And as I understand the restrictions, it's mostly having to do with, with one particular individual, and as long as that particular individual isn't part of the, the new establishment, then they are meeting the guidelines of the restriction. That's my understanding.
So it's just a matter of going through procedure to get it all lifted?
Right. And, and I think that the council would be amenable to looking at an amendment, should the owner come forward.
Thank you.
If I may add, I was looking at the restrictions, and there's a few site-specific things regarding cooking on patio and, and cleaning of the parking lots in the neighborhood, but just very site-specific to the Sandbar, along with the restriction for Mr. Hessler's ownership.
Right.
I see. Well, Mr. Healy, you're my new Ward 1 representative, so you'll be getting the biggest share of my questions.
Hang forward to that, Mr. Steensland. Okay. Anyone else to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor license number 21? Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of retail liquor license number 21, to please approach the lecture. There it is again. Okay. There being no others to speak in favor or against the transfer of retail liquor license number 21, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of retail liquor license number 21.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Schlogger. Discussion. Okay, I would just like to note that our new councilman did his homework. This is good, this is really good. Okay. Amendments. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving evocation and replat creating the Hembree Edition Number 2, a subdivision agreement, and a zone change of the proposed Hembree Edition Number 2 subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9A1, a resolution releasing a demolition lien. Item 9A2, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Trito Construction LLC for the 2016 miscellaneous waterline replacements. Item 9A3, a resolution authorizing change order number one with Grizzly Excavation and Construction LLC for a price increase and time extension for the Casper Family YMCA site improvements. Item 9A4, a resolution authorizing a final acceptance certificate with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Fort Casper Pathway Project. Item 9A5, a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the State Loan and Investment Board for, for a loan through the State Revolving Fund for a loan for the wastewater treatment plant emergency generator project. Item 9A6, a resolution authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with Solid Waste Manager, pardon me, Solid Waste Professionals of Wyoming LLC for construction oversight and project administration for construction of additional land, lined landfill cells three and four at the Casper Regional Landfill. Item 9A7, a resolution declaring seven Code 3 light bars as surplus property and authorizing disposal of same.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Healy? Oh, Councilman Pacheco, and seconded by Councilman...
Johnson.
Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action title.
Authorizing the reappointment of Lisa Graham to the Civil Service Commission for an additional term. Appointing Bryce Rowe, Scott Sisman, and Reed Murchant to a three-year term on the Amaco Reuse Agreement Joint Powers Board expiring December 31st, 2018. Appointing Amanda Sewell, Sewell, to a three-year term on the Hall of Justice Detention Facility Joint Powers Board expiring December 31st, 2018.
Council would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Healy. Who got the second on that?
Me or...
There was one over there.
Okay, we'll go Johnson. So moved by Councilman Healy, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
And now is the time, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address, and we're going to have an informal time limit of seven minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor. Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. Couple of things, first off, welcome to Leadership Casper, but found it very interesting looking at the back of their vest, that the vests were evidently provided by Sinclair Refinery. And what a great partner we have, and should be proud of that facility. And I know their response to the Coal Creek fire was tremendous by their team, and then once they felt secure, they, they had the riverbanks taken care of, went out to assist out at Coal Creek. But I just don't think they get thanked enough for what they do. But number two, at the work session last Tuesday, I really found a, one, one of the parts of that was about the, the dead trees, and found it very interesting. And I've been saying for years, even before the bad storm, and I'm, I'm afraid that we may have more problems because of the, the warmness that we had in, I think it was November, and, because I, I'm noticing the lilacs in my yard trying to bud, and, which obviously with this snap, they're dead. But in North Casper, and in other parts of the city, folks obviously can't afford, and I, to bring those trees down. And, and I realize how expensive it is, having taken down quite a few trees that have been dead, and more to go. But my understanding, I ran into a gentleman the other day that told me that one cent, number 11, 12, or 13, he couldn't remember exactly, a million dollars was allocated as a project to hire an arborist and someone to do the work, and a survey was done back then. That person, part of the money got spent, part of the money, my understanding is, the city put into some of, from what this gentleman told me, and he seemed to know what he was talking about. The rest of the money went into the CATSIE shelters, Buzz shelters, and the gentleman, after about a years, year of work, left employment with the city. If that was accurate, and, and I think it was, you know, could we look at the opportunity fund with the excess one cent to, if you got the 300,000? And then I would ask you to think about going into the budget process for the next fiscal year, to think more about, could there be some monies allocated to work with the community? And if, even in the big tree area, there are probably folks in those neighborhoods that we think of as more affluent, that may also need help, you know, and, and perhaps they could apply, and maybe there's a means testing, I don't know. But it is a big problem, and I liked the assessment idea that somebody brought up that night, but seems to me that we're going to have to do something pretty aggressive in to get this under control. And those that don't need help are on their own, and should think of it that way. But there are, I, I know there's lots of folks in North Casper that are going to need help. So in your budget deliberations, which is not going to be pretty, and especially with the consensus funding going away, which has meant a lot to, as, as the mayor said, all the communities, but, but I would ask you to think about that in that process. And in the growth boundary, I think, I remember a few years back, Mills was pretty offended on some of the things that had happened, and with, with the folks that were mayor at that time, the gal that was mayor. But I, as long as we've worked things out with Barnum, I think, I think it's a good thing for them, and as long as we're not looking to take them over. Also, in your deliberations, I certainly hope we'll have some public hearings and available the, on the, on the B.B. Brooks concept. I don't believe I'm in favor of any of that, especially with this economy, and if there's developers out there that don't want to take this on, they can pay for it, is my attitude. Because you're going to have to put fire stations, perhaps more than one, to service clear out there. And honestly, I find it hard to believe our sewer treatment plant could handle much more, even with everything that folks have elaborated to, that we've got plenty of capacity. But I'm not looking to stymie the growth, but what's wrong with infill? So, but with that, just think about the trees. I know it's a difficult situation, and especially with the limited funding. So I may have gone over seven minutes, but thanks for moving that from five to seven. Jeez. Thank, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, it depends on the size of the crowd. Anyone else wish to address council? Please step forward, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Brown, 2711 Zion Lane. I'd come to the council tonight. I had actually done some research myself on these body cameras. I had contacted all four police departments currently in Wyoming that currently have them. And I don't see any issue with any legislation that needs to be added to be changed to get these for Casper. I made copies for everyone. I ran out of ink, so I don't have enough for everyone. Basically, it's just a rundown in there. They tell all the policies and procedures, how they operate, when they can and cannot be on. And the one that struck me the odd is that, Larry, they've had them for the last three years, as of this February. So that's like, I don't understand where this hangup is on legality and privacy issues. I don't think that these four departments would have purchased these pieces of equipment if they thought that there was a potential lawsuit. And I think that you guys should revisit this issue, and I thought I'd just bring the information I found, so thank you for your time.
Hang on. Any questions for Jeremy Brown? We do have undefined areas of the law, and I think it makes a lot of sense for Chief Wetzel to wait until we work out when and when not. It's a part of the public record. Because you could seriously bog down the efficiency and the privacy of people.
From my understanding, it's all covered in that 16-4-201 through 16-4-205.
I'm going to look at it.
I mean, that's how I understand it anyway, and I mean, if there's anything that could be changed, or anything I'd like to know, because if so, I'd like to run a bill down to Cheyenne and change it, so.
Well, you do know that, and I'm going to have to look at this, but the expectation for a person's privacy inside their house is a very high bar legally. They have a higher expectations of privacy than in their car or on their person. So you can easily imagine a scenario where an officer is going into somebody's house.
And see, for like, release issues, they have part of that technology. You can go in and block and blur certain things. So I mean, if anything were to be needed, kept private, like, they're fully capable of doing it.
Okay. Well, I will give this a look, and it's an issue that requires input from everybody, because it is complex. In other words, I'm saying it may sound like the politician's word of passive remediation, which means we're not going to do anything. But that is not the case. We will consider it further.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address council?
Dennis Steensland, 533 South Washington. I'd like to go back to the tree issue, I guess. As I understood the discussion, it was a liability issue and a safety issue. And it's all nice and good to be able to help everybody with removing their trees. But I personally think with the money situation, the city's got enough to do just taking care of their number of trees and the amount of money that's going to be involved in that. And it kind of ties it back in with Paul Paid. Is that Paul is the right name, Mr. Paid? That presented a safety issue as far as the noise and that stuff. I attended both those meetings, and I was under the impression that the motorcycle group or his group was going to take the bull by the horn and do that whole project. I didn't realize he was going to come to the city for more money. $5,000 as a safety issue is probably money well spent. $15,000 that he mentioned, to me, will be overboard. I think you're always going to run into a certain number of people that aren't going to adhere to whatever safety program we put out there or any, anything. So I'm encouraging the city not to spend money on that type of stuff. The trees, I think when you open the bowl of helping everybody that needs help to remove a tree, that 1,200 bucks a tree, it's just going to snowball to where you won't be able to make much of a dent, I guess. That's my concerns, three of them out of five tonight, so that's all I'm going to bring up.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Dennis Steensland? Okay, I'll try. Depending on perspective, state statutes are very stringent about how we can spend tax money. So if someone is arguing to rein it in, hunker down, be efficient, then those statutes are there to provide us some fiscal stability. If somebody's going to argue that there is an unusual situation where we have 50, 40,000 dead trees, zombie trees, standing, then maybe that is a discussion that should fall under the purview of public safety. But it's, it is a budgetary issue, and we're going to have to just keep looking at possible ways around it. And as in that work session, we're going to have to whittle away at it. And nobody likes that pun. I keep trying that pun. You know, taking the danger part out of a tree and then, you know, keep working at it, maybe pestering Rocky Mountain Power to go through and look at the lines that may have some crowding issues and get a few of the dead zombie trees that way, you know. There's, we're going to have to deal with it, and I understand your concerns about public money.
Prior to that meeting, I thought I had read quite a few articles saying, "Give the trees another year." Has that, and let them, let's see if they're going to come back, and that was my logic on the trees that I have. And I'll probably be liable for my trees, with the exception of one, which is on the city berm. And I would expect the city to take care of that one if in fact it's a hazard and it's close to a school. And that would, I'm the property owner, so I don't want to be held liable for something falling on kids going to school.
Absolutely, and the argument from people who know a lot more about trees, as was stated in that work session last week, is it takes a tree a couple of years, maybe three, to actually give up the ghost. So even though it may have green, you really need somebody to go out there and check. And that some of them are going to bounce back, but some of them are just going to go into a very small, slow, withering decline.
And I did visit with the gentleman that were here, and all you got to do is call them, and they'll come out and give you an opinion and tell you what you're up against. And basically, everybody I've dealt with with the city, you know, as far as finding out information, more than accommodating, you know. It's very easy to talk to those people, and they're very knowledgeable, so.
And for an arborist to make that statement in a public session, put that into the public record, they will go out and look at your tree for free, that's pretty generous.
I want to commend you all tonight. You look awful nice for Mr. Hiley's inauguration on the board.
We also took pictures today.
Oh, that was the...
Your Honor.
Yes.
May I make a comment? I think I sat on the tree task force, and I think it's pretty easy to sit and say, "Well, it's their responsibility." But when you can't afford it, you can't afford it. And there has to be, there has to be some solution that comes up with it. There are a lot of us up here and in that audience that can afford the $1,200 to cut a tree down if it's dead. But Mr. Sweeney is correct, and I didn't have an opportunity to comment about it. There are a lot of people in North Casper and other parts of Ca, or North Casper and other parts of Casper that can't afford it. So it's easy to sit and say, "Well, the city obviously cannot bear that brunt fiscally." But it's much more complicated, and if we are sitting and looking at 40,000 dead trees with multiple people that cannot afford it, it certainly is easy for the ones that can afford it to sit and say, "Well, you know, we can cut it down. The rest of you, sorry, you're on your own. You got to figure this yourself out." We'll be saying that when a tree falls over and hurts someone or kills someone, and then we'll be having a different discussion about that. So this is a true and real problem that we need to be having a discussion about. And that means maybe the neighbors working together. It means something to come together to do this. But it's a real, real problem, and I feel for the people that can't afford to be able to take down these trees that are, in the next year or two, may be falling down.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to address council?
I'm Davy Reed, 2041, Casper, Wyoming. Here because, what are we going to do with all those damn trees? Look back, back 1999, October 1st, October 2nd, we had a similar incident of a bunch of tree branches falling down. Totally created a whole lot of work for a lot of people. And the end result, there was having to be burn off in March. They had to burn off all the, all the excess trees. Well, you know, that last year, we had a fire started from the pump, the fire from the waste place. And now we're going to have this possibility of having all these trees. I'm here to present to you with a thought, possibly your partnership
Okay.
of mass biofuel. If we could take these, all these trees and actually do some research with it and utilize it from creating pellet or fuel source to sell or to give away, who knows? But sure would like to have more conversation with you guys upon that. I don't see why it wouldn't, why, I don't see why it would hurt many, if at all. We got a lot of, a lot of garbage that is not quite, well, garbage worthy that goes to the dump. And that there could also be utilized. But in my case right now, what I want to look at is the trees, and let's turn them into something, biofuel, if possible.
Okay, hang on. Questions for Davy Reed? Questions or comments? You're right, because those trees are taking carbon out of the air, and they're locking that carbon up that could be turned into fuel. And it's, no idea is too outlandish at this point, because we do have a crisis situation with the number of trees. So thank you for your input.
One other thing.
Sure.
All these trees that are going to have to go down, who's got the job to put them back in?
Well, I don't know exactly who, but I did notice a comment in that work session last week that when we replant, we need to diversify, because most of the victims are Siberian elms and then apple trees. But certain species, they survived pretty well. Honey locusts, they're doing great, you know, bur oaks, they're just fine. And you did point out something really important, and that is, this 40,000 trees that we're talking about, this is actually two weather events. There was the snowpocalypse October 4th, and then that, that early freeze in November. So like, 2013 snowpocalypse, 2014, that autumn freeze that killed the stragglers. So that's one of the reasons that we've lost 40% of our canopy, is those two events. But it doesn't help the tree to have huge boughs busted off one year and then a freeze the next. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's real. Anything else? Thank you, Davy. Anyone else wish to address council? Okay. Well, we're going to go around the table. We're going to start with Councilman Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I'll be quick. Just wanted to thank VH, our city manager, Andrew Beamer, I don't think he's here, I think he's gone now, and the chief of police, and actually Flor Tremble over here. One of the things that in city council, a lot of the council members will know that I take great pleasure in is, outside of these meetings, we get phone calls and emails, and it's a great opportunity to really do the, to do what I do for what I ran for. And that's helping my constituents and helping people. And so they helped me with a situation that had taken place over in Ward 3 and where I'm at, and they helped me out with the quick resolution and to help them out. And so I wanted to thank them publicly, and I thank them privately as well. But it's important to know that one of the great joys of being on city council is also being able to help people, you know, on an individual basis. So I just wanted to let them know that thank you for what they do, and they're just great people to work with, so that's all I got.
Councilman Hiley.
In my interview, I stated that I think Casper's a well-run city, and I think, I want to just reaffirm that belief. Casper has a great history of leadership and management, and it's, the history of Casper was what brought me here, you know, a long time ago, and kept me here for many years, so I'm really pleased to be here. I want to acknowledge the city staff. They do the hard work behind the scenes, you know, to carry out the policies and ideas and budget of the council. But I know they do a really good job, and I felt very welcome in getting some orientation training and getting to meet a few of the city staff that I had not known before. So on that matter, you know, this is my acknowledgement and thanks to the staff. I also just want to thank several of the citizens who came up this evening and thoughtfully presented their ideas with great respect. Thank you for sharing your ideas. And Mr. Brown, who I think left, but, you know, he did a nice job of preparing his research, and it's certainly worthy of reading, and I will take the time to do so.
Councilman Johnson.
I have a meeting with the Coal Creek Fire Recovery Organization on Monday in Evansville. Also, if anybody here is a fan of the outdoor channel, there's a fishing show, Fishing Chronicles, that will be featuring Casper February 11 through 14, and March 10 through 13, if anybody's interested. Other than that, I think that's all I got.
You want me to wait and go this way? Go ahead.
Why was that? Attended a CNFR meeting, College National Finals rodeo. With the downturn in the oil and gas business, we will be losing some sponsors. If anybody is interested in participating, volunteering, or sponsoring for the CNFR, please give me a call. We are looking for more sponsors. But that event will be taking place starting June 12th at 1:30 at the Event Center will be the first performance for the Bulls and Bronx. So buy your tickets, buy them early, and buy a bunch. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilman Schlogger.
Nothing, Your Honor. There was just a cute baby back there that somebody didn't mention.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilman Hiley on his position. And this is a good opportunity for me, because maybe some of the initiation and the hazing will be shifted But anyway, congratulations, and I think I speak for everyone up here. We're all really excited to work with you. Also, it's nice to see the Leadership Casper folks here. excited to work with you. Also, it's nice to see the Leadership Casper folks here. I've seen, I've considered applying a few times, and it's just a really cool program, so maybe it will be something I could consider in the future, and it's nice to see that you guys are here. I guess I'm getting to the point now where I've been here long enough where it's really nice to see people here interested in what we do, other than a few other things. Another thing, I just, another comment I wanted to mention was, you know, I have gotten a few comments about the snow and the city's plowing. And I wanted to say for, if any of the constituents in Ward 2 are here listening, listening to the minutes or anything, that we do take each of these considerations individually, but I know that there are certain limitations in what the city can do. And if you think we do live in Wyoming in the wintertime, and we've had some very unique snow issues this year, and I don't know, I shoveled last night thinking that my yard was gonna be great in the morning, come out to find out there was even more snow out there, probably a greater amount. But, just like, you know, your voice is heard, I do appreciate when you guys get ahold of me, and I will consider all that stuff. And to the tree thing, that's another issue we're all interested in. I'm kind of interested to see what this task force is gonna come up with, and I hope we could do something together with the community. And again, I pointed this out before, I remember when it was the treepocalypse, when everything came down, the city came together, and I think that's what's gonna happen here. It's gonna be a collaboration of all of us, because the city does have limitations on what we can spend our money on. Anyways, thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank all the folks that we made appointments tonight, the Civil Service Commission, the Amoco Reuse Joint Powers Board, and the Hall of Justice, JPB. Those people all stepped forward from groups like this, and we appreciate that. From time to time, there's always gonna be a number of appointments that need to be made on council or by council, and we really need your help. And so, I would like to do that. And again, thank you for stepping up, Wayne. We appreciate you having to work with us. Thank you.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I made my speech about the growth boundaries. I won't reiterate, but I think it's a good thing that we got that done. And I think on the tree issue, first, if you do the math, if the average cost of removing a tree is $500, we're looking at $20 million to remove 40,000, take care of 40,000 trees. But, that's really, it's not, but as I pointed out in the work session, and I really think we should all make this clear in our remarks, the vast majority of these trees are on private land. And if the city paid a private landowner to remove a tree, or provided that service using taxpayer money, we are violating state law when we do that. It's a pretty simple matter. It's a very complex problem, but I think we shouldn't, I think it's wrong for us to lead people on that somehow the city is gonna be able to solve this, because these trees are on private land, and it is illegal for a municipality to give money to a private individual. We walk right up to that line sometimes when we give money to a nonprofit for a purpose that is within the bounds of our authority, which is generally to provide assistance to the poor. But, I really think we have a responsibility, all of us, to be clear with people, that it isn't simply a matter of us caring enough or having enough money. It's illegal. So, and maybe we can wish it weren't so, but that's the problem we face. It isn't that we don't care about people who don't have the funds to do this on their own, or that we're short on cash. It's really very clearly spelled out in state statute. So, and I think we all have a responsibility when this issue comes up to make that distinction clear.
Thank you. And I tried to say the same thing, but I was way too diplomatic, totally missed the point. Thank you, Councilman Powell. You know what? Giving people money to fix their tree problem is illegal. So, our creative solutions are going to have to keep that in mind. Personally, I attended the NIC board meeting last week. Davy, is your hand up? City property will deal with its trees, including a zombie tree that's behind City Hall. That, I stepped out of my consulting, you guys, but a previous council said, "Don't cut it down." And I said at leadership lunch last week, "Cut it down before it kills somebody." Anyway, yes, we will deal with city property and zombie trees. Anyway, Nicolason, I attended their board meeting last week, and I, I can't say enough about Mary Koenig, Koenig, because she's their new executive director, and she has some serious accounting chops. It's been a long time since I've sat in board meetings and the directors' reports. Wow. She'll give you facts and figures. You can ask very specific questions, and she will inform. And maybe, maybe the NIC has something that it can offer to help us deal with these trees, too. Anyway, that's pretty much it for me. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a point of clarification, I wanna visit with city manager slash city attorney. I know that basically, Mr. Brown mentioned that strip between the sidewalk and the curb. I know the sidewalk is the responsibility of the property owner. Isn't that land that's sitting there the responsibility of the property owner as well, and that the city only takes care, basically, of the top of the curb?
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that's a question that we need to look at that has been raised. I don't have an answer for council on that particular issue tonight. However, some of the islands within the city actually are owned, I believe, by YDOT through the state of Wyoming.
Wow.
And so, we need to look at some of those issues.
So, that...
The street islands in the streets versus... Yep.
Okay, so.
There's a lot of issues that need to be looked at on that question. You are correct on the sidewalks. The tree issue is one we're gonna have to explore.
Okay. I just didn't want us to start misleading people at this point.
No.
Everybody needed to understand that we still need to do some investigating along those lines.
Okay, so.
So.
So, significant...
Thank you for bringing up the point, Mr. Brown. Mr. What? Reed, I'm sorry.
Davy Reed. Davy Reed. Okay, so, significant streets that are Y, under YDOT's purview, like CY, those would be YDOT.
We need to look and see where the ownership is.
Okay.
But, the city doesn't necessarily own all of those islands.
But, we do own that one out behind City Hall.
We do, we do own that tree, that's all. Did notice there are two resident squirrels in that tree today, too, so. We'll have to relocate those.
Yeah. An eviction notice is coming for those little squirrels. Okay. Anything else? All right. Next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, February 16th, 2016, in the council chambers. Counsel, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
First voting aye, motion passes.
This meeting is adjourned.